And there's a gavel.
It is showing live on there now.
I'm on it now. Yeah, it's just not actually uh. The site, the site is up, but it's not um, it's not actually streaming us yet. Um Dennis needs a second. Oh, now we're good.
Alright, so we're good? Okay. I had a call to order this meeting of the Wayne City of Waynesboro Planning Commission for. Oh wait, hang on here. Tuesday, July 18th, 2020. I'm going to ask that we skip the pledge because we don't have a flag that we all can. Say the pledge to um and I think that I need someone to. Make a motion to adopt the agenda for this meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, can we take a vote to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Okay, great. Um, so let's have a vote. Everyone in favor of adopting the agenda? They are. Everyone not in favor? The agenda is adopted. Um, and has everyone had a chance to have reviewed the minutes from? The meeting held July 21st?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, any comments or anything before we I asked someone for a motion to approve them?
No.
Okay, thank you. Uh, can someone make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting held July 21st, 2020?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting held July 21st, 2020.
Can I have someone second it? Great. Everyone in favor of reviewing the minutes as approved of the meeting held July 21st, 2020? Say aye.
Aye.
Everyone not in favor? So the minutes are approved. And now we have a public comment period. Luke, is there any public people that want to comment?
Um, give me just a second. We did not receive any written comment. Uh, let me put up. On the screen, the number to call if someone would like to call in with a comment. And this will also be the case for the public hearing as well.
Okay. You just tell me when you're ready.
So this is the number. If there's anyone watching via the YouTube livestream or on the government um. Access channel, uh, this is the number to call. And if you call, I will see you and admit you into the meeting and. You'll be able to speak.
Um, hey Luke, this is Sandy Stowers of Virginia Panel. Can you hear me?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. I don't think I have. I had the video, but I don't have it now, so.
I'm sorry, I I I sent you an email. I wasn't sure if I you got it, but I I hid your video until the public hearing.
Okay, great.
How long do you think we should wait?
Give me just a minute to make sure that I. Not. Do not see anyone. Uh, I'm good when you're good.
Okay, so we can close the public comment period and we need to have a public hearing on a rezoning for a property at 326 Ohio Street. Tax map number forty-five, three. Dash three dash A one from LB Local Business to LI Light Industrial. So I would like to invite staff to present your reports on the topic.
Excellent. Everyone see?
Yes.
Yes.
The proposed rezoning is at 326 Ohio Street. Ohio Street is the road that runs parallel to Broad Street just north of it. If you go up Wayne Avenue from downtown here and head up towards the Florence Avenue Bridge, Ohio Street's on the right. In this case, alright, I've got a little map here showing exactly where, right in the city center. The applicant has requested a rezoning of the property at 326 Ohio Street from LB Local Business to LI Light Industrial. The applicant is the Virginia Panel Corporation. Here's the existing structure. It's a large industrial warehouse, about thirteen thousand square feet that has uh, sorry, I have all these square footages in my head from um. The smart scale applications that we just put in of all our economic developments. So now I'm can't even remember if that's the correct square footage here. Um, but it's a fairly large industrial building that's been currently has a warehousing use in it that's grandfathered. Um, and that is not a conforming use in the LB District. Um, but all the buildings on Ohio Street were originally built as industrial buildings servicing the rail line immediately across the street from it. Uh, it is a building in a good usable condition. It has three-phase wiring. It means it's ready to be used by an industrial or heavy commercial use. The proposed zoning that they're asking for is LI Light Industrial. I should have put up here first the LB zoning. You're probably all fairly familiar with it, but LB allows a wide range of residential uses, most housing types. As well as most small-scale businesses, you know, things that you would expect to be in a neighborhood, small retail shops, laundromats, things like that. The LI District does not allow residential uses except by conditional use permit. It allows most commercial uses and less intensive industrial uses. So it's meant to be for a much broader range of more intense uses. Here's a map of the subject property and its location. You can see here, um, this is actually now Port Public Road all the way down and then Ohio Street is located here. As you can see from this, the pink is local business zoning, the red is central business zoning, and the gray is light industrial zoning. The property is surrounded on the east, the west, and across the railroad tracks to the north by lighted industrial zoning. Therefore, staff feels it's not a spot zoning and it is a good location for this. LB zoning, as you can see, is here along Broad Street. Unfortunately, I think in many cases LB zoning has been used as something of a catch-all zone. Um, and then CB Zone is right across the street. This area between the railroad track and Broad Street is on our comprehensive plan as part of the downtown extended area that I discussed in the staff report. This area south of Broad Street is part of the downtown core. In the downtown core, we try to focus on pedestrian-oriented uses, things like retail and. Uh, upper-story residential and and heavy employment centers. In the downtown extended area, we're open to a much wider range of uses. However, we generally want things that create activity that bring. Jobs and people into the center of the city. Uh, we feel that this proposal does that. The applicant is Virginia Panel Corporation. They're one of our largest city employers. Uh, they're uh, looking to expand their operations. They've been in business for over sixty years and they produce a lot of uh, high-tech instrument panels. Their goal is to construct an attractive new facility here on Broad Street to gain a presence in the downtown, but also to expand their operations, which they've been doing very well recently. Um, this is a picture of their current headquarters, which you can see is a fairly attractive building located on New Hope Road near Kate Collins Middle School. They've provided us with a site plan for the potential use, um, as well as a narrative explaining what they would like to do with the property. Um, and what their future plans are for it as well. Uh, they hope eventually to purchase a number of the other properties around this building and further expand, as well as build a new um, glass-fronted facade. That would uh, front on Broad Street and improve the appearance of the corridor. Staff feels that this proposal is first of all, consistent with the comprehensive plan downtown extended area. While this is technically a manufacturing use, which is why they need light industrial, it's a not a noxious use. It doesn't produce noise or odor impacts. It really is not that different from, for instance, Lumos downtown, having just a major downtown employer with um, uh, workers and jobs. Um, who can then walk to businesses and and other things downtown. Uh, we feel this is a great opportunity to invest in our city core area. Uh, it will not create any significant traffic impacts, and even if it did, Broad Street is at something like fifteen percent of its projected traffic capacity. It's an industrial process, but it doesn't have significant noise or odor impacts, so therefore we don't feel it's inconsistent with other uses in the downtown core. Um, and it brings reinvestment to an underutilized property in the city center. There are residential uses in the vicinity, which we would generally try to keep away from light industrial. But those are across a railroad track and across those uh, spot of woods. We feel that they're fairly well buffered already from the property. Um, therefore, staff recommends approval of this um, application and I'm available to take any questions. We also have um, Representative, the applicant, um, President Sandy Stowers from uh, Virginia Panel. I'll go ahead and turn on her video as well.
Uh, Luke, I had a question. Um, so the entrance will be off of Ohio or Broad?
Off of Ohio.
And are are they um, willing to do any kind of verification of the the area on the Broad side?
The.
Landscaping?
So with the with the initial move in, they'll need to submit a site plan, which they've already um, given us some indication of what that would look like. Uh, and that'll involve just the bare minimum as required by our zoning code. Um, they have expressed an interest long-term. Uh, in expanding the entire operation and I'll show you the uh, design that they've that they've proposed for that. But maybe uh, you can get further information about that from the applicant. I'll go ahead and pull it up.
Yeah, can we uh, invite the applicant applicant to come up or do you still have stuff to say, Luke?
Um, I'm just available to answer questions. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Do you uh, other commissioners, do we feel like we want to hear from the applicant?
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, Sandy, if you wouldn't mind stepping up to our virtual podium and um, you just need to give us your name and address.
Okay, uh. My name is Sandy Stowers at fourteen hundred New Hope Road. Waynesboro, Virginia.
Sandy, what's your timeframe for for constructing this?
Well, our immediate need is to get a building that is really like uh, Luke said, zoned for um. It's it's really a manufacturing facility. It's it's got uh, six hundred volt wiring in there. The uh, owner before that put that in there. It's very open space, which is conducive to the type of manufacturing we do. Which is a lot of cabling that we're doing for major corporations like Tesla, SpaceX, um, Virgin Galactic, a lot of satellite-type companies. And we're um, getting not able to kind of meet that need and also we have issues with COVID. So our immediate need is to get into this space, which uh, helps uh, in a lot of ways to meet uh, current projects. And then long-term, depending on our ability to continue to um, uh, grow and also to have uh, the local people somewhat reasonable with their prices. Um, of of their buildings that we would have to actually knock down. Um, we're just taking it's it's a three-phase step, like first phase is to get into the building. That we're probably going to renovate that building that uh, as far as the courtyard, it's kind of dilapidated. Uh, we have to put in some bathrooms, uh, handicap accessible. So we'll add value to the existing building and then depending on how we move forward, then we would go for the net, we'll come back to you for the next phase.
And and how ma- how many are going to be working in that building?
Um.
For the first phase?
Uh, the first phase, uh, it could be as fifteen people is plenty.
I mean, the reason I guess I'm asking is about your parking. I I noticed you had a parking lot planned in your long, your uh.
Yeah.
Uh, design there. Uh, I guess that's near the end of.
So that's uh, covered by the site plan, actually.
Yeah.
So they'll they'll have to provide adequate parking with the move-in, so.
Yeah, so we're one mile away. So basically, uh, we were thinking of innovative things like. Google bicycles, like we could see people working on projects and just kind of going down there for a project and coming back. It's one mile away. We could shuttle people there if it was really an issue, but. We use a lot of automation, um, so we don't need a lot of a lot of people. We're putting a lot of money in some of these automatic machines. To um, increase the accuracy of the product and minimize um. Uh, the number of people that we need. So I think right now we can work with that and then we've talked to the adjacent owner. Uh, he's willing to lease his parking space. I don't know if that makes it compliant, but also possibly sell his building right to the right of us. So that would be more than enough parking right there.
They also have access to quite a bit of on-street parking on Ohio Street that's not currently used.
And also public parking across the street, which is pretty much vacant, that whole lot.
Arch Avenue Lot.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, that's that's not much use there.
Exactly.
Okay, any other questions before I open the public hearing?
What is your goal ultimately for? You said you're start with fifteen employees. What is your goal ultimately for this facility? For employees?
Um, it could be, I mean, we we've been in business sixty-two years and we really only have uh, a hundred and eighty employees and we're pumping forty-eight million dollars through Waynesboro. So I mean, again, uh, we we have locations all over the world. Um, not manufacturing, though it's pretty much centralized to Waynesboro. We do a lot of outsourcing. So um, it's basically the ability to work on some of these bigger projects. It could be, I don't want to, it could be, it could be fifty maximum, but it's not going to be a huge thousands of people or anything like that.
Fifty is better than none.
Excuse me?
I said fifty is better than none.
Yes, uh-huh.
Any other questions for Sandy?
The building to the right that you're hoping to purchase, I'm assuming that's the old Glass Company?
No, I call it the um, well, I use the kind of third-world name for the building with the tree growing in it. It's uh, Dr. Kivikun owned that building. Uh, he gave it to his son and his son, I think he actually lives in there, but anyway. That's another story. Um, but I've constantly reached out to um, the son um, and then to the Kivikuns. Um, because his son doesn't communicate very well, so he's he has offered to lease parking space and maybe more space.
Okay.
Um. Um, so that's as you face Broad Ohio, it's to the right. It's it's really looks like uh, something that should be condemned, maybe, but. Anyway, um, I don't know what that building's all about. There's it's not, it's it it probably couldn't pass any codes, but um. That's a separate story. We also looked to the building to the left, the old Moore's Building. And uh, we were looking at possibly that building also, but again, these people, that's probably not going to pass code either, which meant all of these buildings require a lot of money. To get them up to our level. We like to things to be modern and high-tech looking, um, you know. That everything to code and the Ohio Building is really has the is the the cleanest of all of those uh, three buildings.
Okay.
So you will be taking the lot where Garrett's um. Hair salon is as well?
Well, we did reach out to him and we did try to work with him, but he um, thought he was going to get rich. Um, so we're going to wait him out. You know, if, I mean, we don't have to do that. We don't, we 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 have a worldwide reputation. We don't need to kind of market ourselves on Broad Street there, but. I kind of wanted to do that. I wanted to make it a showroom. It could, it could be a conference area, it could be a reception area, it could be just a huge open space. Um, and and you know, create um, inspiration for the employees. They're pretty excited about having um, just. A bill, another building to work with, another building to create space for um, projects, make it um, a good place for people to work, open and ventilated. Ventilation's very important right now with COVID. Um, we've been open since this whole pandemic. We're mission critical. And we only had one case, uh, which was uh, not transmitted throughout the organization. Um, and then Saturday we got another one, but um. Where we have our own tests that we test, so I mean, COVID's really puts a big stress factor on a lot of these variables. So the more space you have. Um, the more places, the more options to even quarantine workers that are that are not even having any symptoms. Um, is a is a is an option. We'd love to get in there pretty soon so we could actually use that space.
Yeah. I think aesthetically for Waynesboro, it'd be really nice. I'll see if I can work on Garrett to get him to retire.
Well, he's retiring in two years and then he was thinking of one. I gave him a sweet deal. I told him I would let him, I'd give him rent-free. And uh, he um, for a year and the other, I had a contract on the other house, which that guy was easy to deal with. But Garrett went in the ozone uh, with his pricing, so.
Yes.
This is a uh, just so you know, Sandy, this is a public meeting, so don't want to share too many proprietary proprietary details of your of your negotiations.
Okay, well, we have nothing to hide. He's a hairdresser.
We love him.
Yeah, he's he's a good guy. But I mean, we we have to focus on, you know, immediate need and the immediate need is just that building. And that building has um, was built really well and concrete takes one hundred years to cure, so. That floor is pretty pristine. It's it's uh, got almost no cracks. You probably couldn't even pour a floor like that now. And uh, it's a cinder block, which is well-built and we have to immediately work on the the uh, roofs, eighty thousand dollars, just to get the roofs up so they're not leaking. So again, um, lot of lot of little history, a little safe in there. Um, it's kind of quite like to retain any of those kind of historical elements of the building.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Sandy, for your information.
You're welcome.
We might need to come back to you again, but I don't think so. Um, so now I can open the public hearing unless commissioners, you have anything other things to say?
No.
Okay. Do I need to wait for you to put the number up or we're good?
I just put it up there.
Okay, so I'm going to open the public hearing on the rezoning for the property at 326 Ohio Street. Tax map number forty-five dash three dash A one from LB Local Business to LI Light Industrial.
Again, if you would like to speak at the public hearing, please call this number. If it asks you for a passcode, I don't think it should, but enter this number right here. Um, probably just give people a minute or two.
Okay.
And I'll tell you if I see anyone on the uh. On the call-in list.
Minute or two seems like a long time.
I know it does, but probably seems like a very short time when you're trying to fumble around your phone. I don't expect any any comment, but.
Yeah.
Good to.
Time is kind of nothing these days anyway.
It's true.
At least what we knew as time.
But I'll leave it up to your discretion, Shannon, whenever you, whenever you're satisfied.
Okay, I I feel like I'm satisfied. I don't, we haven't had any email comments and nobody seems to be waiting, so I'm going to close the public hearing. And. You don't, Sandy, I, we didn't have any questions, so I don't think you need to address them. Uh, staff, do you have any other inputs or comments?
I have no additional comments.
I don't have any.
I think it's a great idea. I think uh, business is in a building. It seems particularly suited, well-suited to business in this area. And people in a building is an awesome thing. Not living in the building, but people doing business in buildings is an awesome thing. So it seems like a a very appropriate use for it. So I don't think we need any other additional debate. Does somebody want to make a motion to approve the rezoning for the property at 326 Ohio Street? Tax map forty-five dash three dash A one from LB Local Business to LI Light Industrial?
So I'll move that we recommend to the uh, city council, the rezoning of the property at 326 Ohio Street. Tax map number forty-five dash three dash A one from LB Local Business to LI Light Industrial.
So good.
One second. All right, all in favor of the rezoning as the rec- rezoning recommendation as stated by Steve? If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you're not in favor, say no. So the motion carries. We will recommend, we want to recommend to city council that the property at 326 Ohio Street. Tax map forty-five dash three dash A one from LB to Local Business, LB to Light Industrial is appropriate. Okay, and. Then I think we're done. And then now it's um. Basic City Land Use Plan Discussion. Time. And Sandy, thank you very much for your information. It's quite helpful.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, we're back to the to this again. Um, so last time we talked, you all suggested that a comeback, I I presented you with a proposed, what a proposed zone would look like. Uh, then last time we talked about sort of the options, uh, and then you sort of wanted to go with a new, we, you're still open to the idea of a new zone, but wanted it to be a little more scaled back than what we had initially looked at. Um, and that was the sense that I got from that meeting. That's still accurate. We've looked again and tried to put together a a little bit more scaled-back version of the industrial revitalization zone idea. Um, again, if if you just think we need to scrap this whole project, I'm open to that. Um, but if not, I will show you all what uh. What we have been working on. Um, but my thought is that, and again, anyone correct me, but it, I'd like to, by the end of tonight, hopefully have a clear idea of. What we want to do and then next month I'll bring you an actual ordinance with a public hearing. Um, advertised that that, unless people just feel that we're not there or that we just don't don't want to change anything. So my, the proposal that we went with is to create a new zone and actually I think that Commerce Street here or or um, Ohio Street, where this rezoning was. Is actually a perfect candidate for this zone as well. Um, the same type of thing. It's it's a place where we want to allow small-scale manufacturing, industrial uses. A wider range of uses for redevelopment area. Um, and we would not want to, if we have someone like Sandy come to us and say, we want to expand our business, we want to not tell them you have to wait. Three months and go through a rezoning. Um, but we don't want to necessarily zone everything industrial, houses all around it in a core city area without knowing what's what they're going to build. Um, so for that reason, that's why, what I think the value of the of this proposal would be. Uh, so. We can talk through what uses should be allowed or not allowed. Here's uh, staff's proposal based on your comments last time. Um, this IR, I should have highlighted it here. Oops. But um. This right here would be the IR zone. So our suggestion is first of all, to continue allowing the residential uses that you have in in the LB Zone. So we would still allow folks to um, to construct houses. And I have some hesitancy about allowing the construction of new single-family detached homes. If we are allowing these other uses, um, but I wouldn't want to take that away because there are so many existing homes scattered and, you know, part of the whole point of these areas is that they're homes scattered in along among the businesses. Um, and as those resell, you know, we don't want those to become non-conforming uses, because I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to create trouble for people with their mortgages. Then we allow a wide range of commercial uses. So these are all the types of things that we hope to see the businesses eventually transition to things like. Yeah, things like restaurants, coffee shops, retail uses. A lot of these are allowed already, um, but we would continue to allow those in this IR zone. Uh, I skipped over quickly here, social service institutions. This is sort of a uh. A gray area. In the business, in the business and industrial zones, we generally allow a wider range of post-incarceration facilities. Care and treatment for psychiatric alcohol, drug problems, rehab clinics, social service facilities, et cetera. Uh, I'm hesitant to allow all those uses here because I'm imagining that this is a zone that will apply in areas that are already extremely dilap- dilapidated or in, you know. In a rough situation, so it's not necessarily that real place. It it might, it might attract those uses quickly and it and it might not help those areas to have those uses concentrated in a spot like this. So. My thought is to restrict those and put more conditional use permits on them. Then uh, yeah, mostly the same as local business, all through the the business uses. Uh, some of the, we would allow limited vehicle services, which would normally just be conditional use permit in local business. And then some of the like body shop type of uses, sort of like gas man that's across the street, we would allow by conditional use permit. So it would still allow us to sort of control for making sure that there are no negative impacts to residents around.
Luke, let me interrupt you a minute. Luke, let me interrupt you a minute. So I'm reading it exactly right. If it's a P, it's permitted.
That's correct, yes.
C it requires a conditional use permit.
That's correct. Yeah, sorry. If you if you're not very familiar with our zoning ordinance, this is what the actual use table looks like. Somebody finds what zone they're in, finds their use, and it tells you if you're permitted or not. Uh so yes, P would be by right, C would be conditional use permit. The main difference with this zone versus the commercial zones is that we want to permit uh manufacturing. Um and permit uh some lighter industrial uses like uh like a lumberyard by conditional use permit or a mail order house. But mostly manufacturing is the main difference. Actually, this really isn't that different from commercial uses. This this is the real little main one right here. Um and the proposal there is that we add a, and I copied this out of zoning ordinance, so the reference isn't working, but add a use standard for those, um which I'll show you. So in the use standard section, we would add use standards for the vehicle sales and service uses and for the industrial manufacturing uses. Um and again, these numbers are off because I've copied them out of, they're all cross referenced in the original document. Um for the vehicle sales and service uses, again, those are uses that we generally wouldn't put into a residential area. But now we're thinking, well, this is a redevelopment area. We wanna have some activity in these buildings, a business of, this kind of wanted to move in. Uh but we would restrict their operation um to daytime hours. Um and it would also require that they maintain uh their operation within a constructed building. Um and that they must have to, they must screen their storage. Um and also screen if they are, if it's a sales operation. So if it's a used car lot, for instance, that they're selling, that they have some kind of screening. For industrial uses, for manufacturing uses, uh we would add some additional uh use standards. One of them that they can't generate uh noise or light or traffic, you know, during nighttime hours. And I've been talking with Laura Martin, the zoning administrator, about some different, different ways we could word that. Unfortunately, you know, we'd like everything to be very black and white in the zoning ordinance, so that there's as little interpretation on our parts as possible. But sometimes some of the things we're getting at, it's just hard to measure. And so uh this will involve some discretion, probably on our zoning administrator's part in interpreting the ordinance. But it that's not, it might not be a terrible thing either, but we'd also restrict uh industri- industrial uses that generate noxious discharges. Um including any smoke or smell beyond that generated by a typical residence. The goal would be to allow manufacturing uses similar to what we talked about tonight at Virginia Panel that are higher tech, uh that are within enclosed buildings. That there's not noise or smoke coming out of the building, that type of thing. Um that really is no different in a sense from having a commercial building adjacent. Um but to not allow um, you know, more noxious uses. And then also industrial uses involving manufacture hazardous chemicals or discharge of hazardous byproducts would be prohibited. Uh now it, that would really already have to be a heavy industrial use. That would actually have to be in our HI district, but clarify that anyway. Um and then all industrial activity and equipment storage would have to be contained in a constructed building. Um so you'd not be able to have outdoor warehousing, for instance. Um except for if there's some necessary storage outside, if it was screened. So that is our proposal for use standards. And then we also discussed parking. We could go a lot of different directions with parking. This was kind of just my initial thought to throw out there. That basically the parking uh section spells out how many spaces you have to have for how many square feet. And it results in very much a suburban, if you follow the parking ordinance, it results in a very suburban look. You know, if you look out by exit ninety four. Those businesses are built with our parking requirement. Um and you have to have lots of adequate parking for all, everyone who might wanna visit your business. Part of the goal here is that that's hard to provide in a historic subdivision pattern. Uh and you also, in these underdeveloped areas, have tons of on-street parking. And these are lower value uses. So in the central business district, the parking is waived. You don't have to have any parking downtown. Uh there's an understanding that it's shared. Uh for the IR district, I'm thinking of somewhere in the middle. So my proposal is that the requirement, the parking requirements should not apply to properties in the IR district. If the number of off-street spaces required is less than four, if the number of spaces required is four or more, the requirement should be reduced by fifty percent. So basically, if they only need a, you know, two spots, don't make them tear down, you know, a lot of these buildings cover an entire parcel.
Right.
And so if, you know, if they only need two parking spaces, you don't wanna make them tear down part of the building to to provide them, so they can park on the street. But if they're gonna, they are gonna require substantial a number of cars, um then we just reduce the parking requirement. Something that's a little bit more urban. That's my proposal for this district. Um and oh yeah, and here is the description, which should guide, uh would come up in rezonings. Which I think I've read before. I don't think I've really changed this very much. Just to say that it's maximum flexibility in areas that have housing and industrial mixed. And that it's meant to, this I think is the key piece of logic. While its use standards are meant to ensure reasonably quiet enjoyment of residential property. They provide minimal protection from aesthetic concerns or intense daytime activity. As such, the IR zone should be used in areas where there's no existing expectation that residences will be free from proximity to commercial and industrial activity. It's not intended for use in new subdivisions. So we have a completely single family home area. We would not rezone a property to IR saying, well, that's compatible with home. Rather, it would be for an area where there's already a mix of commercial and residential buildings. Um so anyone who bought a house there assumes that there will be businesses and industries around them.
So Luke, is there, is there a footprint uh of this area that we're talking about? I mean, is it limited from the swath of land from on Delphine to Commerce or or what what, or is it all a basic city? What what do you?
No, all I'm proposing now is the text amendment. So this would just create the category. Um so I wanna get the category right for, so that it fits what we're looking for. Uh then when we actually do a rezoning, a map amendment, we could discuss where this would go. Um so I'm I'm really just creating the the tool right now. And uh if if it's a useless tool, then I don't wanna bother, but you know, muck up the zoning ordinance further. But I'm trying to get at, at something that we're we're missing in our zoning ordinance right now.
You you're saying a lot of the things I wanted to hear. Um can you show me where the artisanal blacksmith would fit in?
Yes, that's a great question. Yeah, let's think about specific examples of. So that is, that's really a manufacturing use was the problem, that we couldn't really fit it into local business, you know. It wanted to put him in as something, but it it just doesn't fit. It's a manufacturer, they're making stuff. Um and so uh the idea is that they would fit into manufacturing as a permitted use. Um and they would have some, the these use standards, they wouldn't be able to generate, you know, noise and light during nighttime hours. They'd have to have, you know, but they would fit in that they wouldn't be generating any noxious discharges. Uh they wouldn't be dealing with hazardous chemicals. They'd have a constructed building that they'd be working within.
All right, in a restaurant tour, um that was looking at Waynesboro and where to put the restaurant. This um this zoning would be more attractive, because maybe they could pick up a building cheaper and and parking would be there.
Potentially, yeah. So they'd be all permitted uses here. And yeah, they would have a lower parking requirement. So um they would, a restaurant, restaurants have pretty stiff stiff, uh stiff parking requirements. So they definitely would have more than four, but they'd at least have uh their requirement reduced by fifty percent. Um so a typical, like a fast food restaurant that can, that has two thousand square feet of um of area might need twenty parking spaces, which actually takes more than two thousand square feet to provide. That's why you end up with larger parking lots and buildings in suburban areas. And so here you would need a much smaller uh footprint. And you could count, you know, our parking ordinance already lets you count the on-street spaces immediately adjacent. So maybe you end up just needing eight spaces or something, and you can fit those along the side of the building. If I can pull up a uh, yeah, let me pull up a map here. You often end up, yeah. So for instance, like this uh, you know, the furniture store on Broad Street. This is a, yeah, Ashley. So this is a large footprint retail store. That it already was a furniture store, so they didn't have to do a change of use. But it would be very hard to convert this building to another commercial use. Because they'd have to do a site plan, they'd have to provide parking, and they would need at least probably three times this much parking space.
Yeah.
Um maybe double as much. Uh but a lot of older buildings have this kind of situation. They just have a few parking spaces in front or something like that. Um so the IR district would if we go over to basic city here, yeah, for instance, if you are um four oh eight diner here. You know, these, these, this land is all in little strips. Suppose you wanna open a restaurant here. It probably reduces your parking requirement to only needing five or six spaces for this little spot. And so then you can fit him in along the building, and maybe you just own one strip right here. I think they actually, I think back in the day, they actually had to buy all this and demolish a building to get this whole parking lot. But it would, it would reduce that requirement. We can go higher or lower. I would, I was just spitballing the fifty percent.
Hey, hey Luke, talking about uh parking. I know in the town of Dayton, there are half dozen or dozen little restaurants right there along Main Street in the historic district of Dayton. Is their parking requirement something that we could latch on to and maybe use to help facilitate, you know, the little coffee shops and little little diners? You know, I've been in a couple of them. Of course, some of them have on-street parking, some of them have little side lots. But I was just wondering if uh we couldn't uh adopt, adapt uh their parking requirements there in the town of Dayton for uh our own use to expand, expand the opportunities for people. Like the coffee shops and uh things like the similar to the French press downstairs downtown or the River, River Burger Bar.
Yes, most, most likely those buildings are old, the old buildings that are built prior to the parking requirement existing. Um though maybe they run into something when they, when they do a change of use. And yes, uh you know, you're you're speaking our language here because the the movement in the planning profession generally is against parking requirements. In fact, um an economist at UCLA named Donald Shoup wrote a book called The High Cost of Free Parking, basically about how built into all of our goods in the United States, the parking requirements are. Um and how expensive that is for housing and retail and all all these other things. Anyway, it's a really interesting book if you ever wanna look it up. But since then, planners in general have been trying to push back against parking requirements. That said, when you push too far, a lot of times people are very accustomed to there being good parking everywhere. And and you get into, you do get disputes between commercial business owners, you know, who's using my parking or not. So, you know, if if you wanna go lower, we're, you know, plant, the planners are gonna back you up, but I don't know whether, you know.
No, I was just curious. I was just curious what their parking uh requirements were for those restaurants
I'm not sure.
in the historic district of Dayton.
Yeah, I'm not sure. In in our downtown, we have no parking requirements. So we have, we have parking exemption if you are here in this zone for between Broad Street and and um Arch or and and Eleventh or so in the central business district. So yeah, all of our little, our main street businesses are not required to provide parking.
Well, you've got four public parking lots right there within three quarters of a mile of every restaurant downtown, so I wouldn't see the need for you know, to require a business to put in parking. I mean, you can park in the old Vance Lot, you could park in the Loomis Plaza, you could park in the old uh Leggett Building parking lot or right there beside the brand new liquor store.
Yeah, so it's a lot more efficient to share the parking and to get that downtown experience of all the little shops close together. You really can't have, you know, because like I said, the, if you really have enough parking for everybody, it 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 ends up multiplying. Like if if you see an area where there, everyone is following the parking ordinance. You just, all the buildings have to be way more spaced out to provide all that parking. So you you can't really have that same experience of a downtown. Um so yeah, that's why you really have to have a parking exemption for downtown. So in IR, we could do a parking exemption too, or we could just, you know, do a parking reduction. Try to get it at least a little bit closer towards the um, towards that that experience.
I think that parking reduction is a good happy medium, because you still want, if somebody is doing light manufacturing there, you want their employees to have a place to park. And you want the people to be able to park on the street to go to the shops, you know. I think we have to have something, maybe not a full exemption, but I think this fifty percent and the limits you've set sound like a great place to start.
Yep.
Certainly more welcoming than building something on the west end.
Yeah, I think every building down there is just gonna have more people that wanna use it with this change.
Any other changes that you wanna see to this area, to this zone that would make it more useful?
No, I I think that's, like Larry said, that's exactly what I was in envisioning. But didn't know how to put it down on paper.
Good. A- a- any specific uses? I don't, I mean, you probably can't see the use table super closely here, but
Yeah, I can.
You'd wanna call out.
Uh I like the uses of the of of the restaurants, the light manufacturing. Uh particularly after seeing the V VPC example of what they would like to do on Ohio and Broad if they can get those additional buildings. I think that will clean that area up and reduce the number of eyesores. It's it's too bad they can't purchase the old Moores building and do something with that, but um.
Maybe they will. Yeah.
Every journey begins with the first step, so this is the first step.
I do think as the, as the, sometimes as the planning commissioner, as the city council, it's it's easier to wait for them to drive the rezoning. Because, you know, we wanna know what's gonna happen. If we're gonna rezone it to Light Industrial, we wanna know who's gonna be there, wanna know it's gonna be them. But um you know, in terms of attracting business, when um, when Virginia Panel approached the city about uh locating this property and found out that it wasn't zoned properly, they almost just backed out. Because a lot of business folks aren't familiar with zoning, and they think, ah, well, that's gonna be a hassle. I don't know what city council will say. So you know, I think it's even, if we know that we're okay with things like this, it's important that we put that in our zoning ordinance and say it. So that we're not, we're creating predictability for buyers and and so business owners don't say, well, I, you know, I don't know, I'd have to go through a three-month process, and I don't even know what they'll vote for in the end.
Yeah, I like the uh permitted bowling out of there. I I I sure do miss Wayne Lane.
I think this is excellent work. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Nothing. Good, good. I'm glad this is closer to what we're, what we're looking for.
Well, I think being proactive in a time like, time like this sort of post-industrial time where we have these sort of weird industrial, semi-industrial areas, we have to be proactive. And like you said, we don't need to be reactive. Let's be proactive. Let's say, these are all the things you can do here now. And make it a little bit easier and more inviting. I think this is great.
Yeah, and we stayed, we did not allow any uses like um where, we we stayed away from pretty much all the warehousing uses. We stayed away from self-storage, um anything that would, and from vehicle storage, uh storage yards. Anything that wouldn't create activity on these properties. That seemed to be the the goal last time.
All right, let's do it.
All right, sounds good. We'll prepare ordinance then and advertise it for, for next time. So this would just be a text amendment. If you all wanna discuss, there there are two ways of going about it. We could just create this zone. And then it would be available in the future if, uh you know, if a business wanted to use it, wanted to rezone to it. Or we could do it, Shannon and I were talking about it, proactively uh rezone. Um and that would involve uh us sitting down with a map and saying, here's all the properties uh that we want this new zone to cover. The zoning, a rezoning can be initiated either by the property owner, you know, and that's the applications that we generally deal with. But the rezoning can also be initiated by the planning commissioner, city council. So uh we don't actually have to wait on a property owner to rezone. We will have to inform them. Um and you know, it's generally not a good, not a good idea to make everyone terribly angry. Um we would like them to be on board. Uh but I think based on our surveys and meetings before, I think most of our at at least our commercial property owners would be very on board. Um but yeah, we could sit down and try to decide what, exactly which parcels we'd like to include in a rezoning and
I say, let's do it.
Yeah, I I totally agree with Shannon. Let's be proactive in it.
Let's leave a planning commission sized hole in the wall. Let's Let's leave a planning commission sized hole in the wall. Let's do it.
I think you had the right idea. Let's create the zone and then worry about the map. What's going to be in the zone. In other words. Set out the parameters of this particular zone and then we'll come back later and figure out what area it specifically applies to.
Right, but I, I think rezoning the whole area is what, what, the vision that I have. Instead of allowing this new zone and then rezoning everyone to this zone at piecemeal, let's, let's just do it. If we're going to do something, let's do it.
I agree with that, but what I'm saying is, let's create the zone and then come back and draw the map. Don't, don't try to do the map and the zone at the same time because a lot of folks. Whoa, whoa, wait a minute, wait a minute, what am I going to be and all excited?
Yeah, well.
It has to make sense that, where you're rezoning, because you've got to be able to justify that to the, to me ask. But I think what Luke you said is to remove one of the steps when people do want to bring a business there. That they, they aren't going to be scared off by, oh gosh, I, I don't want to go through all that stuff with the planning commission and city council. So that, you know, that's one less roadblock.
Yeah, we can, I'll, I'll bring that, I'll advertise a public hearing just for the zoning text amendment next month. And that way we can get that discussion out of the way without particular property owners having to come in. And then maybe next month we could start, after we do the public hearing and get that done. Maybe we can start discussing specific parcels and how we'll go about the actual rezoning. Does that sound like a good idea?
And of course, Luke, once we've established the text of the zone, if someone wants to come in. And say, hey, I'd like to rezone that in this area. That might start the process of mapping.
Even this Virginia panel rezoning was a great example. You know, it helps that there's light industrial already around that area. But initially I was thinking that was, this was all local business and I was a little bit hesitant. I was like, you know, I wouldn't mind Virginia Panel being there. But I don't know that I, but I want to stick a new light industrial parcel right there. But I think if this zone existed, it'd be a lot easier to say, oh yeah, we have a zone that fits small manufacturing uses. That are surrounded, that are near residential areas. I think we'd have a tool to, to pull out. It would work a lot better.
Well, you have a map like this showing the zoning when we do go to look at how we want to apply it.
Sure, we can, we can do this over on that.
Yeah, I mean, that looks, that's very helpful to see what's already zoned and where it is.
Yeah, we kind of use LB Local Business as our catch-all. Commercial zone, but that's not really its purpose. You know, like this, this kind of property where you've got trucks back where the flea market is and. Stuff on Commerce Avenue, you know, it's not really like neighborhood commercial. It's more, there's something else in the middle there, so. Well, we can do that. Great. I will prep and advertise an ordinance for you all.
And once we vote on that, Luke, will that have to go to the city council for approval?
Yes, it will. But, but you all will be the applicants. You'll be the initiator of it. Which I was going to say in general, as your, your power is planning commissioners. You're, you are able to propose any ordinance change. If there's something that you, you don't have the ability to change anything. About city council, but you have the ability to make city council discuss something. So if there is something you ever want to propose. Has to go to, has to go to council, so. All right.
All right, so are we on to other business correspondence and communication? Anyone have anything to say?
I'd just like to thank the city council for the work that they're doing. I, I have caught the last several virtual council meetings and. Would like to thank them for their effort, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And hey, just, just so you all know, Monday night, we're going back to live meetings. We're going to be at the city hall in chambers. Luke, I don't know if you guys want to plan accordingly to start coming back into office or continue to do this.
Yeah, I was going to ask what you wanted to do at the council. Is council going to direct other commissions and groups to meet? Live or are you going to leave it up to the?
We're, we're going to leave it up to the individual councils to do it the best they're need.
Okay, so we should probably discuss that then, Shannon, what, what you all would like to do for September, if you're going to meet virtually again or, or. Do a live meeting now that council's meeting live.
Well, we don't usually have a lot of people show up at our meetings. And unless we have an issue that proves to be something that needs a lot of, of face-to-face community engagement. I'm all for staying virtual.
Me too. We're essential business. I got sixty people all up and down the East Coast. We may or may not have had two tests today for the first time. From, speaking for myself, it's not about you giving me the bug. It's about me giving it to somebody else. That's really where my head's at right now, at least for the rest of the calendar year.
I agree with Larry. Yeah, I think probably, you know, for the next several months and just kind of. See what comes up, play it by ear, but to stay virtual for a little while longer.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll do whatever the majority wants. I'm not opposed to meeting in person. I mean, everybody goes Walmart, Target, grocery shopping. They're going out to eat now, so. I'll do whatever the majority is doing. Are they going to be limiting the number of attendees?
Yeah, we, yeah, we, we are and we're going to, for our meetings, we're having a deputy there that will. Be monitoring who comes in and goes. They've got to be temperature checked and sign a sheet that they don't have the symptom. Before they come in, so. I think council and staff plus ten members and people are allowed in.
Well, Bobby, let us know how that is going. As the, as a computer illiterate person on this group. And obviously there's other people that may have some interest. I'm all for the courtesy of not trying to spread this, but by the same token, we sometime are going to need to open back up.
Okay, and we're, Monday night's going to be kind of a test run for us because we're. Be the first time we've opened up and, you know, we've got a small chamber, so we can't allow so many people in. How many people will show up and it may be we go back virtual until something else happens, but we'll see Monday night.
Have y'all advertised that yet, Bobby, that y'all will be in person?
It's going out tomorrow.
Noel, do you have any thoughts?
I'm okay doing whatever the group decides. I guess I'm sort of in the camp with Lowry. As I'm more worried about my exposures through work and potentially bringing it to somebody else than I am about necessarily. Being safe myself there.
I have a cast of employees who have worked diligently making and sourcing masks for all the school kids in Waynesboro. And I just, I feel like I can't jeopardize them. They've worked through the whole pandemic and safety being our number one goal. We've switched over our manufacturing and it's really, I'm not ready.
Yeah, let's just let it be an ongoing conversation from meeting to meeting. See how council does with it and see how, you know, what's going to happen with vaccines and stuff. I mean, I don't see the reason to rush back into in-person meetings if we don't have to right yet.
We could always try to hybrid. I've seen that successful in a couple of different groups across towns. Where, you know, there is an in-person meeting and then somehow it's broadcast over Zoom and YouTube. It's, it seems to be pretty effective and engaging people.
Well, that, that's the way our, our meeting is going to be. We're going to have, people are welcome to come in, but we're also going to continue the Zoom YouTube. Live feed, so those that are at home, they don't want to come in. They can, and we're encouraging that to call in and give their concerns.
Fantastic, okay. Great, so we'll be virtual again in September and then we'll discuss as we go. That'll be good too. In September, if we do this ordinance, if we're not doing actual rezonings, you know, there won't be any particular property owner that needs to. Unless they want, unless they're interested. We can hold off on that.
If I recall, Luke, you're going to have to advertise this zoning and obviously anybody who. Says what is this could come in and question it, but.
Yes, correct.
Probably, I would guess not.
Yeah, I mean, maybe somebody who's in an area that because of our, our survey or everything knows that they're a candidate to, to be put into this zone. But, you know, there won't be any particular parcel that'll be put into it yet. It'll just be.
And you're not going to have to be notifying by first class or mail.
Right, it'll just be advertised.
So it's just going to be a newspaper notice.
Yeah, actually, even when we do the rezoning, we don't have, we will send letters to the actual property owners. But we don't actually have to notify all the neighbors because the rezoning will affect more than twenty-five parcels, I'm assuming. You don't have to notify if it does. Great, I, I don't have any other items to report on, other than that we submitted our smart scale applications yesterday. At three o'clock, and so those are done. And thank you very much to Kira for all of her work on those. But the, the system is, yeah, the system is so long range that like, you won't see any of those projects until like late twenty twenties if they happen, so.
Hey Luke, what happened with the, the car dealership stereo place right there beside Mio Racho? That we approved last summer? Did they go under or?
They kind of went dark on us, just quit. Yeah, I'm not sure.
Before COVID, I mean.
Yeah, it was before COVID. I, I'm not sure if they had issues with the plumbing or, or the backfill preventer, but somehow they. At some point, they had done just about everything that we had asked them to do.
Yeah, and they looked like they were on the urge to open it.
They, yeah, they seemed like they were. I'm not sure. We, we've contacted them, I, I probably tried to email them six months ago or so and didn't hear back. It was longer than that because it was before COVID. Yeah, not sure.
I was just curious, like Sid, I hadn't seen any activity there since, back before Thanksgiving.
All right, I think we're probably good. So somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn this, this meeting on August eighteenth of the planning commission.
Someone want to second it for me?
I'll second it.
Okay, everyone in favor of adjourning the meeting, we can call it adjourned. They say hi. I'm never sure all the stuff we're supposed to vote on, but I figure if in doubt, vote.
You're doing a good job.